All right. Hear ye, hear ye. Hello. This is the City Council of the City of Northampton. A council meeting for September 5th, 2019. I'm Ryan O'Donnell, I'm the council president. So I'll be running the meeting. These proceedings are being audio and video recorded. And we'll start with public comment. I think we can get away with trusting people to kind of maybe know and infer the rules, so let's just jump right into it without the preamble. How about that? The first is our city clerk Pamela Powers. Clerk Powers, floor is yours.
Hello there. My name is Pamela Powers and my address is 105 North Main Street in Florence, but most of you know my second address, which is 210 Main Street, Room 4. I'm your city clerk and proud to serve in that capacity. And I'm here tonight to remind everyone that on September 17th, there will be a preliminary election held in Ward 7. The polls at Leeds School and JFK will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And if you're a registered voter in Ward 7, you'll be casting your vote for the nomination of counselor from Ward 7. We have absentee ballots available in the city clerk's office if you qualify. As a reminder, absence from the voter city on Election Day, a physical disability which prevents a person from going to the polls, or a religious belief which prevents you from voting on that day. Since there is a municipal election and not a state election, early voting is not available for the preliminary election or the election on November 5th. I'd also like to alert you to the fact that preliminary work is being done for the 2020 federal census. Currently, the Census Bureau is conducting address canvassing. It's the first major field operation of the 2020 census, and it will continue to run through October of this year. The census takers must present an ID badge that includes a photograph of the field rep and the Department of Commerce watermark and an expiration date. I've added a page on the city clerk area of the Northhamptons' website, and it's called "Who's in the Neighborhood?", and I'm using this area to keep the community updated about census activity. And as a reminder, the federal census and the annual census will be conducted in 2020. It's important that residents respond to all census requests. The federal census bureau data is collected and strictly protected under Title 13, so the city doesn't have access to the details that residents respond to on their survey. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing Ward 7 members at the polls on September 17.
Thank you very much. It's very informative.
Can I ask a question?
Do you have an informational question?
Informational question. I'm just curious if there's anything written up that we can share with our constituents about the census, so we can send it out and they also know where to find something on the city's website?
Yeah, I can send you what the census has provided me with. Are you talking about the address canvassing that's being done now?
Yeah.
Yep. The letter that came from the census is actually on the city clerk's webpage, but I can forward a copy to you.
Oh, I can get it from there, okay.
Yep.
Oh, thank you.
Janet Gross. Welcome.
Thank you. Janet Gross, 38 Round Hill Road. Just when we thought work on the development atop Round Hill Road would finally cease, after five long years fraught with hundreds and hundreds of heavy dump trucks and trailers traversing the hill, the noise of excavating, pounding, and paving, noisy mowers, excessively loud gas-driven blowers, and the infinite beeping of backing equipment, we are now threatened with pickleball courts for Checkrider's employees and the development's tenants, whose numbers will eventually total over 200. Since the developers can apparently modify their original site plan, the pickleball courts were very narrowly reviewed by the Historical Commission last month, and will soon receive similar cursory treatment from the Planning Board. Currently, there are no athletic facilities visible or audible from a public way in the Elm Street Historic District. There is no good reason to create a precedent at the expense of neighbors' quality of life. Pickleball, a game played with hard graphite paddles and polymer balls, has been described as ping pong on steroids. It is noisy, repetitive, resistant to abatement, disturbing at the very least, potentially damaging to human health, and hardly appropriate for Round Hill Road. The proposal, for example, fails to meet the 2018 recommendations of Spenderian and Willis Acoustics and Noise Control. The proposed fence is too low, the noise barrier of questionable value, and the court's location largely within perpendicular brick walls will serve to reflect the sharp pop of pickleball on paddle. That the courts will be located approximately 150 feet from our house and from residents at the development demands more careful and expensive abatement. Why not locate the courts within the employee's gym? According to the city, Checkrider's employees are entitled to enjoyment of the owner's property. What about taxpaying property owners? Please note, this apparently does not yet include the developer. Have we no right to enjoy our property, including our home's interior, free from noise pollution? I urge City Council to look into the degradation of Round Hill Road, including the number of residents who have left, and to research the negative impact of pickleball. It is likewise long overdue for the city to ensure...
Finish your thought, please.
To ensure that ordinances for mixed zoning don't disadvantage residents. And please don't overlook the impact of the 2016 conflagration. The Round Hill Development has been profoundly destructive. Pickleball courts will only add to the damage. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gross. Usually, we play that sound when we're about to debate something, because it sounds like boxers starting. All right, so Sharon Moulton. Is that the new bell? Did the Vice President change the bell when I was...
You missed a meeting and...
Lost control, I'm like Boris Johnson.
I'm Sharon Moulton.
Excuse us, Ms. Moulton. The floor is all yours. We're done joking around.
I'm Sharon Moulton from 48 Evergreen Road in Leeds, in Ward 7B. And I just was trying to pull up the email that I got that said it had your agenda on it, but when I tried to do it, it said "Not Downloaded." So I'm not sure if you're going to have second votes on the three things that you voted on last time, that I was on the commemoration day for what happened in North Carolina and for the Green New Deal.
Yes.
And then there was... Oh, and I forget what the third one was, but... Oh, I know, the special request of the legislature so that North Hampton doesn't have to accept bids from companies involved in nuclear war. So I appreciated what you did last time, and I really... If you're doing it again, thank you. But what I wanted to talk a little bit more about is that we're in a climate emergency, and one of the big things that's supposed to happen to help turn this around is September 20th. And one of... I've been involved as a Climate Action Now person in support of the local Sunrise Movement of Youth, and there's the... One of the big things that's happening in Massachusetts is the Boston Climate Strike. And hopefully, if the camera can see, that this says exactly how you can sign up for a bus. And I was at the Sunrise meeting on Tuesday, and they were encouraged to sign up for as many buses as possible. People have been hesitant to sign up because they want to make sure there's enough room for youth, but the thing is that it asks how old you are, and so you can be gotten in touch with if there needs to be more room. People should be back by 4:30, 5 o'clock, from doing that. And in North Hampton, we're going to have a "Turn the World Around," which is going to start with a march from Sheldon Field at 4:30, with a rally in front of the State House at 5:00. So I'm going to try to do both of these things, but hopefully, everyone will do at least one of them.
Thank you.
Any questions?
How are you going to get from Sheldon Field to Boston so fast?
Well, I'm going to...
By walking.
I mean, the bus will take us there.
I know, you got a bus. You said there was going to be a march. I'm sorry.
The march is from Sheldon... It's from Sheldon Field to... And if I go to Boston, I probably will just show up for the rally in front of City Hall because the Boston thing involves a march from the City Hall to the State House.
Got it. Well, we appreciate that information and your comments. Thank you very much.
I've ordered a whole bunch, because I'm going to the labor union breakfast thing tomorrow, so I've got some business-sized cards that have each poster on each side, and I'm picking that up at Paradise, like at 8:30. And are there people that would like a business-sized card with this information on each side? Because I will come back and drop some off.
Sharon, is there access to the information, I would assume, online?
Yes, yes, ClimateActionNow.org.
The Youth Commission is convening on next Wednesday, so I would take some of those cards to pass out.
Oh, but they... No, they won't need them. They know about it.
Yeah, okay. They'll pass it.
Some of them are on Sunrise.
Yes, I know. I've heard.
All right. Would anyone else like to give public comment, who has not yet? Buddy? Okay. Then, hearing none, we will convene, so I'll ask for a roll call of council.
Counselor Bidwell.
Here.
Counselor Carney.
Present.
Counselor Dwight.
Here.
Counselor Klein.
Here.
Counselor LeBard.
Present.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Nash.
Here.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Here.
And Counselor Shara.
Here.
They're all here. Any updates from anybody on the council? Counselor Dwight?
Yeah. I was away... I missed one Charter Review Committee meeting in August, which was an auspicious one, actually. The meeting this time was a holdover from the previous one. There was originally a vote to... Well, it was to address the issue of a possible conflict with particularly school committee members and who might have a partner who is working for the city, and particularly in this case with the teachers' union, which makes them obliged to accuse themselves in certain budgetary debates. And in fact, actually, there was originally proposed to cover all elected positions to try and avoid further potential conflicts like that, and to be equitable and fair across the board. But in the course of debate, there was an initial vote taken to support only school department employees and school committee members. In the last meeting in August, that was turned over, because there was an appeal by one school committee member who had identified as having one of those conflicts and making his case to the committee, suggesting that that might be too draconian. That vote was... Then, last night, was proposed a modified version, because actually, the city solicitor did some research, and you can't prevent any... You can't exclude someone from running for office. We can't make rules about that. That's actually a violation of First Amendment rights among some. So the alternate was proposed, that no relative... No immediate family member would be given a job in the city of North Hampton for the school departments while that person served. That was voted down. Largely, the debate... Everyone acknowledges the conflict and the potential problems that come from the conflict. There were two points, at least, that I asserted was, one, I'm not sure this belongs in the charter dictating these terms relative to hiring. But two was that it might be just a little too much restriction and limitation of the potential for people to run for office. So again, and that time it was voted down unanimously, I believe, in this case. So that's... We also discussed actually how we're going to start drafting our final report.
Okay.
Because we're at that stage now where... And if the public... The public still has any points that they want to bring up, or any questions, or challenges that they would like, they're still welcome to do that in the meetings, or in writing, and they're invited to do so, so.
Great, thank you.
That's the end of that update.
Do you think you'll publish, like, a preliminary report and receive...
That was part of the discussion. Yes. And the hope is that... The concern was, we would like to get it out so the public has an awareness of it before the end of... Hopefully, before the election, so that potential candidates can actually be... Address the questions relative to those points. And then also, because in all likelihood, it will not be this council that will ultimately end up deciding on that, so... Because the reports due December 31st. So it will be the next ensuing council, so it'll be an opportunity for candidates for office to bone up on what those issues might be.
Thank you for that report. That's very helpful. So go to Counselor Nash.
Thank you. So at the TPC on September 17th at 4:00 p.m., we will be discussing... Reviewing some parking changes around Smith College. Now, these parking changes have already been at the TPC back in June, where we reviewed them as a committee, and found them favorable to send forward to City Council, but that in discussions with Counselor Bidwell and the mayor's office, that some sort of place for public input around these changes was... The TPC was deemed the place to best have that. So we're going to keep it on the agenda before sending it forward. It'll be on the agenda this month. It has to do with West Street, Arnold Avenue, Elm Street, and Belmont. And basically, the changes have to do with creating metered spaces on public ways where currently it's free parking. So Counselor Bidwell's been reaching out to people at Smith, and I just wanted my colleagues on council to know about this, and this would be a good place to really get the information from the experts who actually pulled these documents together.
Great. Thank you for that announcement. Any other announcements from the council?
One-minute announcements? Have we moved on to, or just...
How long is your announcement?
I can keep it under a minute. I just didn't know if we were just doing chairs of committee announcements.
You should take the time you need and announce.
Thank you. I want to invite everyone to an opening of a photography exhibit. So on Friday, September 13th, at the Center for the Arts, Portraits of Pathlight is opening. It'll be at... Shown there at the center through March 28th. So, what month am I in? October 28th. And 14 area photographers partnered with Pathlight to take really beautiful portraits of people that are served by the organization. Many of the photographers are from North Hampton. The one who actually took this portrait is sitting next to me. Counselor Dwight has a few portraits in the exhibit, and I just helped put up the exhibit yesterday, and it's really stunning, and I hope everyone will join us at the opening. There'll be refreshments, so that's 5:00 on the 13th at the Center for the Arts. So please come join us and see this beautiful, beautiful exhibit.
That sounds really great. Thank you. Anything else?
Is there a dunking booth to dunk the photographs?
I have a week to look into that.
I like that.
Maybe from the mezzanine down.
There's not enough water.
All right. Anything else? Jokes, threats? All right. So, Mr. Mayor, I understand you have a communication.
As I noted on the agenda, provide an update for you on the pending Proposition 2 and a half general override question. I'll let you know in my main budget message to City Council for the FY 2020 budget. I outlined the history of our fiscal stability plan over the last several years, and the fact that we would indeed be dipping into it for a second year, and that based on our projections, we would be needing to exhaust the fund to balance the FY 2021 budget and still have a deficit based on our projections at the time, and that I felt that it would really need to go out to the community to seek essentially a renewal of the fiscal stability plan through another Proposition 2 and a half general override. At the time, sitting in May, my thinking was I wanted to do it prior to the FY 2021 budget was due, as opposed to waiting until after the budget passed and then have to go back and revise it. So my thinking at that time was to try to place it on the November municipal election ballot this fall. Couple of issues have arisen in terms of our trying to essentially project the number that we think that we need. Question's simple, it's prescribed by law. There's not really anything about writing the question. The key is what is going to be the number, and that plays into then the modeling for the subsequent, you know, four to six years as we try to build the stability plan. As you may have heard, the state budget process went on a little longer than normal. Actually, I think we were the last state in America to pass a budget. That delayed some of the numbers. The other issue that sort of is a corollary to that is the long-awaited education reform bill that first was supposed to come out at the beginning of the session, then it was going to come out in the spring, and then it was, we're going to wait till after the budget is finished to do it, the month-late budget. Then it was going to happen right after recess, the August recess, and now we've been told that it's not going to happen till the end of September. So that's a fairly significant piece of legislation that could have an impact on our calculations, as well as the fact that we... The slow rollout of the cannabis industry continues to make it challenging, I think, to get a more accurate estimate of what our revenues are going to be from that. So what I am proposing is to still have this override election prior to the FY 2021 budget submissions for both the schools and the city, but to do it on the other citywide election that is already scheduled, which is the March 3 presidential primary that will be occurring in North Hampton citywide. It's already a scheduled citywide election. It would occur almost a month and a half prior to when the school committee has to complete its budget, and almost two and a half months before I need to submit a budget to you on May 15th. So it serves... It does the same purpose, but it has the added advantage of our having a chance to see what actually happens with that education reform bill that's supposed to come out and be debated in September and October. It also would give us one, possibly two, more quarters of FY 20 cannabis revenue. The net... We don't actually get the first quarterly payment for FY 20 until, well, October 1st. So October 1st, January 1st timeframe is when we would get those two. That would, I think, also help us in terms of those calculations. So I wanted to update you on that. Again, in my budget message, I said that I would be coming to you in early September, and at the time, my intention was to bring a question to you. I still intend to bring a question to you. I would be overjoyed and ecstatic if the legislature passed an education reform bill that solved all of our problems, but by all indications, it's going to be a multi-year solution. But it would be helpful in terms of... We have to sort of first understand what FY 2021 looks like in order to then build the model going forward for the subsequent year. So that's why I've made the decision to hold off and to bring this question forward to you at the end of the year for that March 3 presidential primary, which is on a Tuesday.
Super Tuesday.
Super Tuesday.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. Well, we're not here to discuss this, but any questions or clarifying questions? No? Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that update. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
The... Oh, now a resolution. So two resolutions, second reading. First, 19122, Resolution declaring October 6, 2019, a day to commemorate the 1979 Greensboro massacre and to reflect on white supremacy. Is there motion to approve this in second reading, please?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on second reading this evening? Counselor Dwight?
I just like... First of all, I'd like to thank Counselor Bidwell for bringing this forward, of his approach some time ago to do this. We have actually done a resolution somewhat similar to this a while ago. Marty Nathan is... I'm sure Counselor Bidwell shared with you, Dr. Marty Nathan, whom we know here, had lost her husband at the time in this massacre, and in fact, a massacre that is very little known historically and very little discussed. I mean, we know of the, you know, the shootings in Kent State, for instance, and in Mississippi, but this one, for some reason, passed without notice by and large. And... But this one was particularly egregious, and in fact, actually seemed so resonant of the circumstances and tenor of today, that this is presented with a certain urgency. This happened in 1979, but here we are in 2019 with similar actions by similar groups, people being killed, and violence being committed on... By people who identify as right-wing Klan members, or American Nazis, or new alt-right groups that feel licensed to declare their primacy in this country and then exert that with violence. And so I'm grateful for the sponsors who actually ushered this in, particularly Counselor Bidwell on this, and I'm proud to actually be associated with it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Second reading. Okay. So it sounds like we're ready to take a roll call vote on this.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBard.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
And Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Okay, that resolution is approved on second reading. The next is 19123, a resolution calling for the federal government to pass a Green New Deal.
Approved.
Okay, I hear a motion. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Klein. Any discussion on this? Counselor Dwight?
Well, you know, I'm attached to two resolutions here that I wasn't able to be here for for the presentation, so once again, I've got to thank Counselor Klein. Counselor Klein really picked up the ball when I... I'm sorry for the sports metaphor, but the... I had to be away, and the Sunrise group and the members that are identified at the end of this resolution, Willa Sipple, Seraphina Forman, and what's Jordan's last name? I've forgotten.
Windsor.
But I'm sorry. They were the ones who came to me and asked if this was possible, and they're... Two of them are also youth commissioners, worth noting. And asking what would be the best way to present this, and we discussed it at some time, but I never got to help them with the final draft. Counselor Klein did the final draft, and it's stunning. It's perfect, because it actually reflects what I was emphasizing, that North Hampton's efforts in this direction, absent congressional action, this community's been devoted and committed to all the principles and the goals of the Green New Deal even before it was defined. and the goals of the Green New Deal even before it was defined as such. And it made perfect sense, here we have a resolution that actually has, that we've taken steps to commit ourselves to addressing climate change, as if it's a real thing, as if it's a genuine threat. And I, the Sunrise Group gave me great hope. It's, again, I want to, and this will go to another point that'll come up later in the agenda, but a youth-generated group, most of these people are not given the power and authority to vote, and yet at the same time are actually affecting more change, provoking and prompting more thought and consideration about legislation, about the prospects for the future than most adults I know. So I'm just grateful, I know that they communicated with me right after this, that they were ecstatic that this passed unanimously, and that the council showed the unanimous support. And I think they've been hearing consequently that the community has support and is particularly proud of their efforts, and I just want to repeat that I am also very proud, and just grateful that we got to be a channel for this, a conduit to present this to the public so that actually even the newspaper noticed, and they wrote an article about it. So, yeah, I know, right? So, so, thank you, thank you all for your votes then.
Anyone else? I do think it's a really nice sign for our local democracy when things bubble up, you know? It shows that democracy isn't just contained within a governmental structure like you might debate in a charter review committee, but it's part of the fabric of North Hampton, and what could reflect or eliminate that fabric better than a proposal like this, so I'm also happy that this is before us today, and that all these people you named are involved, so, great. If there's no other comments, then we should have a roll call on second reading.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBard?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shera?
Yes.
And Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Okay, that is approved in second reading as well. The consent agenda contains only the minutes of August 15, 2019. Would anyone like to remove them for a separate vote? Because usually, there's like a hundred things on the agenda.
Well, I'd like to move approval then.
And is there a second to that? So there is no debate, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? So that's consented to and approved. And now we will recess with the finance chair by Counselor Murphy.
A pretty quick agenda for us tonight, too. Laura, would you call our role for finance, please?
Sure.
Counselor Murphy?
Here.
Counselor Carney?
Present.
Counselor LeBard?
Present.
Counselor Shera?
So the first item is approval of the minutes of the August 15 meeting. Do we have a motion?
Vote to approve.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. The first order we have is 19126, In Order To Appropriate Transportation Infrastructure Enactment Funds, in a total amount of $6,157 for Burt's Pit Road reconstruction, whereas the city has received $6,157 from the Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Enhancement Trust Fund for trips conducted by transportation network companies in Massachusetts for calendar year 2017, and whereas the funds must be appropriated by the city council upon the recommendation and approval of the mayor, and whereas the funds must be used to address the impact of transportation network services on municipal roads, bridges, and other transportation infrastructure, or any other public purpose substantially related to the operation of transportation network services in a city or town. Now we're therefore ordered that the amount of $6,157 be appropriated from the Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Enhancement Fund to be used for the costs related to the reconstruction of Burt's Pit Road. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, and the mayor can answer questions.
So, just by way of background, those of you who are familiar with Uber and Lyft and other ride-sharing networks, the state does collect a fee on those trips, and they, through the Department of Public Utilities, through a portion formula, apportions that back to cities and towns where rides originate. So this is for 2000, and these actually are for 2017, Uber and Lyft and any other network transportation systems, and we get 10 cents a ride, so what this tells us is that there were over 61,000 rideshers that either originated or terminated in North Hampton, which is a little more than I thought would have thought. And so the way the process worked is they contacted us in late 2018 and said, you're eligible for these funds, and you have to tell us what you're going to use it on at the time, and so we said, we'll just, we'll apply it to paving, and they said, no, you have to actually tell us, like, what specific road are you going to pave? This was in December of 2018. The one main project we knew about at the time was Burt's Pit Road. I'd actually come to you in December of that year. So we designated it for Burt's Pit Road, and we had to sign a form. If you go to the website for what community spent it on, you'll see we spent it on, we're spending it on Burt's Pit Road. So we have to appropriate the funds, so when, knowing that when the director built her budget for Burt's Pit Road, the total contract price, the awarded contract price was $1,409,272.50, that was the awarded bid award. So the way the budget for the project was structured was we used $912,725.88 from our bonded funds, the ones that you approved the bonds for, $265,089.62 came from Stormwater Enterprise Fund for all the drainage improvements, we used $225,300 in state funding, and then we used this $6,157 to round out the full budget. So we're really going back now and just making sure that it gets properly appropriated into the right accounting line item, and we'll be getting another infusion of these funds from 2018, and we're already been having some discussions about potentially using it for some enhancements to our bike share network in the community. So we're, again, it's not small dollars, and obviously, you know, 6,000 was not really like a major dent in the project, but I just wanted you to understand why we allocated it to Burt's Pit Road, because we had a deadline, we had to allocate it to a project, so that's why it was used for Burt's Pit Road. So we're basically asking you to appropriate this to that Burt's Pit Road project.
Counselor LeBard?
Mayor, I know when I had read this order, I talked with Susan in regards to this amount of money, $6,157 whatever, that how could it be used on Burt's Pit Road? We're having a serious problem with speeding going on now, which we all knew, that this was going to happen when a road is redone over, and I said, Susan, I know Jim had mentioned to me, Counselor Nash mentioned to me about the new solar-type lights that they have, which shows off a speed limit, can something like that be used to go ahead and use that money to place it on Burt's Pit Road, like from Emerson Way over to Woods Road? It's a serious problem.
We can certainly look into that type of a treatment, but what I'm basically saying to you tonight is that this $6,000 has already been spoken for, because it was applied toward the project. It's not new money for the project, it's money that was being, was already allocated to pay for the paving project.
Okay.
We did recently receive some grant monies, the police department received grant monies, and you may have seen a, one of those flashing speed signs on the entrance on Route 10 to the city, right on the Mill River Bridge, that tells you your speed and what the speed limit is.
Right.
So we can certainly pursue that and look into it, but this money can't be used for that. It's not really money above and beyond the Burt's Pit Project or bonus money, it's actually money that was allocated toward the Burt's Pit Project. Okay?
Thank you.
Other questions?
What was the amount per ride again?
They allocated 10 cents to us. I believe they collect 20 cents, but they put it into some sort of a fund, and half of it gets allocated to cities and towns at 10 cents per ride. It's actually fascinating, you can, I'll send out the link later to you all, but there's like, there's a map that shows, you know, you can hover over cities and towns, and it'll tell you like how many rideshare, you know, network, whatever the term is, but basically, rideshare, rides occurred in different cities and towns, including North Hampton. And this is a requirement of the regulations that were put in place to regulate Uber.
10 cents per ride.
Any chance we could ever raise that amount?
That would be a state issue, and probably a DPU-related issue, I don't know, but certainly with all of the congestion concerns that are raised by the new move to Uber and Lyft, you know, it's clearly having an impact, particularly in metropolitan Boston, as people don't move away from the MBTA, which has become unreliable, and of course, we're not investing in other types of public transit. People have, you know, used this and sort of collapsed the taxi industry and devalued those taxi medallions, and so, but it basically means people are still riding around in single occupancy vehicles, which doesn't really help the situation. So, so, yeah, it's, I don't know what the next, what will be coming down the road in terms of what the state's going to look at, but I know that some have argued that they should be really clamping down on it and increasing those fees and incentivizing people not to take those types of trips and to use public transportation, so.
And actually, a 50-50 split for the state is pretty generous, when you look at meals, taxes, and everything else, you know?
Yeah, and I don't know what they're doing with the other 10%, I don't know. With the other 10 cents, I don't know.
Counselor Bidwell?
Like you, I was surprised, that is a big number. You do the math, and it's 167 rides a day in 2017.
Yeah.
That's, that's...
Well, if you open, I mean, there are Uber, I mean, there definitely are Uber drivers. I chatted with, you know, particularly students and graduate students, and I've chatted with a number of them around the city who do it on a regular basis.
But what I really want to say was that I like the idea of, in the future, it being earmarked to smaller projects where you can really say these funds made a difference, particularly anything having to do with our bike infrastructure.
Exactly.
Anything that provides, you know, an alternative to...
Yeah, one of the things that Director Fiden is trying to encourage, the collective that makes up Valley Bike Share, all the communities, to allocate their share of this towards the bike share network, to extending and sustaining the bike share network, so. So that's just one of the ideas we're talking about, but certainly, again, I think we may even have the number, it did go up in 2018, I'm just trying to see, and we'll be bringing that forward to you, but as probably as part of the capital program, but just trying to give you the number, it went up to $8,300 in 2018, so 8,300 rides originating or terminating in North Hampton, so it's grown, yeah.
Any other questions? Oh, Counselor Klein?
It's a relatively small amount of money, but I don't think the $6,100 was in the original pavement memo that we got in terms of the budget, so I'm wondering if it kind of offset, if it allowed us to do something else in terms of paving or crack sealing or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, the pavement memo, I'd have to go back and look, it certainly would have been included, because it was such a small amount of funds, but I mean, the trick is when you put the pavement memo together, you're basically going, you're using estimates for what you think projects will come in at, and then you actually go out to bid. In some cases, they came in lower, in other cases, they came up higher, particularly as we got later in the construction season, and there's often contingencies built in, so I can't tell you that, yes, this 6,000 was definitely spent on something else, it's probably just part of that whole give and take of the whole, you know, estimate versus actual bids, and then you often sometimes have change orders that occur that have to be, you know, problems they encounter that have to be fixed, so, yeah, but I'll make a note of that for future pavement memos if we're planning to include some of this funding in there.
Any other questions on $6,000 for Burt's Pit? Hearing none, then all in favor of a positive recommendation of finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Next is 19127, In Order To Authorize Intermunicipal Agreements For The Youth Adult Empowerment Collaborative Of Western Mass, order that whereas Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 4A allows joint operation of public activities among governmental units, and whereas Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 4A requires that such intergovernmental agreements be approved in a city by the city council and the mayor, and whereas the city of North Hampton provides services to and shares services with other municipalities, therefore pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 4A, the city council hereby authorizes the city of North Hampton to enter into the following intermunicipal agreement for FY 20 and 21. Young Adult Empowerment Collaborative Of Western Massachusetts, contracted partner with Franklin County Sheriff's Office, the Opia Task Force of Franklin County, and the North Quabon Region. Agreements to work cooperatively to develop and strengthen regional data systems serving young adults, preventing and addressing young adult issues by creating and promoting evidence-based programming to support young people as they transition into five stages of adulthood and engaging families and communities in their roles to support young adults. Do we have a motion of finance?
Make a motion.
Second?
This is just another one of the intermunicipal agreements, this is a project that Hampshire Hope has initiated, and they're basically going to form this youth advisory committee and have one youth representative from each of the Hampshire Hope partner communities, and try to do some focus on youth in terms of their outreach efforts on prevention and other types of activities. So it's sort of a subset of the Hampshire Hope, which we already have an intermunicipal agreement, but because this is a new, a new kind of subset of that, we just thought to be safe, we would take it forward and have you approve it as well.
Questions? Counselor Dwight?
How are they defining a young adult?
In here, 16 to 24 is how they define it, in terms of the terms of the, in the terms of the grant that they put together.
Yeah, and I was also curious, I didn't know about, there were five stages, but I have no idea where I stand. A little worried.
You don't want to know.
The fifth stage is...
Death? I'm not sure, but yeah, it's worth knowing what those five stages are.
I will try to get some more information.
Yeah, if you could write me an amendment.
Maybe I'm counseling for something.
Can you account for it, Counselor?
Yeah, because I have some serious work ahead of me, I guess, but so.
I will try to get you some information, Counselor, and we can try to chart your progress.
All right, so if everyone has finished their self-evaluation on that one, any more questions? Hearing none, then all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the last is 19129, It's In Order To Authorize The Lease Of The Senior Center Roof For Solar Planting. Order that whereas the North Hampton Senior Center was constructed to be highly energy-efficient in accordance with LEED standards, with potential for future addition of solar photovoltaic arrays to complement its geothermal heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems, and whereas city residents Maury Philbin and Bryan Adams, acting through their nonprofit charitable organization, Philbin Adams LLC, has generously offered to fund the installation of solar photovoltaic array on the roof of the North Hampton Senior Center, and a six-year lease is a condition precedent to the grant of the array gift to the city.
And so apparently, there's been an amendment as well.
There's just a revised version.
Oh, that's why I have two.
Hate for you to read.
Well, I happen to get two of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, that explains why they're two.
To be the same.
It just shortens it to acting through Philbin Adams LLC, that's all. It just takes out the word nonprofit charitable corporation, that's all.
Oh, that's the only change?
Yeah, that's the only change, so.
So if you start from the second paragraph again...
We'll get rid of that one, if that's the bad one. So back to whereas city residents Maury Philbin and Bryan Adams, acting through Philbin LLC, has generously offered to fund the installation of a solar photovoltaic array on the roof of the North Hampton Senior Center, and a six-year lease is a condition precedent to the grant of the array as a gift to the city, and whereas Mass. General Law, Chapter 30 v. subsection 16, requires a vote of the city council to surplus any interest in public property prior to its disposal, not therefore be resolved, the city council declares surplus a leasehold interest in the roof of the North Hampton Senior Center located at 67 Con Street, North Hampton, and authorizes the mayor to execute a six-year lease for said roof on terms and conditions as the mayor deems reasonable, subject however to the following restrictions. The leasie will be responsible for care and repair and maintenance of the solar photovoltaic array for the duration of the lease, and at the conclusion of the lease, the leasie shall... array for the duration of the lease, and at the conclusion of the lease, the leasie shall grant the solar photovoltaic array to the City of Northampton. We have a motion in finance?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
So, Maury Philbin and Brian Adams, who are both Northampton residents, are heroes. They're like, they're incredible folks. They've been quietly doing this work around the valley, and the backstory is, which I'm not sharing any personal information because they've kind of put it out there, but they both received inheritances from their parents, and very sizable and enough to be able to live comfortably and take care of themselves, and they wanted to figure out what they could do with the rest of it, and they were very interested in promoting green energy. And so, they formed this LLC, and they've been going pretty much around the valley putting PV systems on nonprofits through a very unique arrangement and business model. And so, if you've seen the PV array at the Survival Center, you've seen it at the Grove Street Inn, or you've seen it at Audubon, or you've seen it at any of the, I think, the Ammer's Food Pantry, I mean, basically, all throughout the valley, they've been basically giving these solar systems to nonprofits to help them cut their energy costs. And the way they do it is they, they've actually worked out a partnership with Northeast Solar, who is their installer, and the six-year arrangement, I know, has raised some questions, why the six years, but essentially, they own the system for the first six years, and the city or the recipient gets the benefit of a reduced energy cost, fifty percent reduced energy cost of the energy that's generated by the array. And then after six years, they basically gift the array to the organization, and then the organization not only gets the array, but then it reaps the full benefits of the energy savings and any, it used to be called SRECs, now it's called the smart credits. And what they're basically doing is using that first six-year funds to pour it back into doing more solar systems so they can continue this. It's just really incredible and amazing, and so, I started a conversation, a dialogue with them about this and whether they would be interested in doing a similar arrangement with the Senior Center. They were really excited to do it, we had a meeting, they got their solar person out there. When we built the Senior Center, it was a LEED bronze building, and it actually is a high electricity user building because we have the geothermal heating and ventilation system, which uses a lot of electricity. So, this system would be about just under a thirty kilowatt array, and I think you have a photograph of what it will look like, a diagram, and it will rough, it'll reduce, it'll produce about fifteen percent of the power used by the Senior Center on an annual basis. And again, after, you know, the first six years, we would be basically paying, you know, fifty percent of the national grid average commercial price for the power generated, and then at that point, it would be donated to us. So, it's sort of like a win-win-win for the planet, you know, it's just a really incredible thing, and I commend them for doing it, and I commend them for offering this opportunity to the city and the Senior Center. So, because it involves us basically giving control of our roof, and because they'll be owning the system, we're basically letting them put the system on the roof for the first six years, so we have to kind of do this surplus arrangement, similar to when we surplus the cap on the landfill to allow the Ammeresco array as part of that whole arrangement and power purchase agreement, so.
Yes, Mayor, when I had read this, I had to call Susan and talk to her. I've never heard of the company before. This name is something new to me.
Okay.
Okay. Brian Adams, is he on CPC?
Yes.
Chairs.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Yep.
My question is, does this company do this all the time for all these private agencies for a six-year, because, I mean, if it's a gift, then why is it not just given to the city?
As I explained to you, this is the model that they created in order to be able to continue the work and pour the money back into new systems. And again, this is, if we were to do this ourselves, we would have to pay for the system installation, we would have to pay for the maintenance, for the upkeep, and then we would, you know, then, yes, we would own it at that point, but at this point, that hasn't been a high priority for us, the Senior Center, and the cost of the system to install, so the opportunity to have someone else pay for the installation, maintain it, run it, and still get a reduced energy rate, and these leases are a very common arrangement in many cases, often, I think, I want to say, there's some other entities that have done these lease arrangements where, you know, a company comes and puts a system on, it's a lease, and in return, they don't get the SRECs credits, but they get a reduced energy rate, and often, people sell space at large solar arrays under the same principle. So, this is kind of a twist on that, but again, this is a, essentially, a free system, and we're gonna, you know, it's gonna be, you know.
No, I think it's really great that they're doing this, but I had concerns here because usually, if we get a gift, it's given to us.
Well, we're not actually...
My question, Mayor, also, after the six years, what happens if we have problems with it?
Well, these arrays have a warranty of fifteen years.
Okay.
And that covers all of the roof work, electrical work, and the installed components, that's from Northeast Solar, so again, we would still be covered for an additional seven or eight years, it's warranty. And the name Philbin Adams is literally just a mashup of Maury Philbin and Brian Adams.
Because I've never heard of him.
No, they just created this corporation, because the way the credits work is that nonprofits generally aren't eligible for the credits, so they set up a for-profit LLC that basically can execute it, similar to Ammeresco and the city. So, that's sort of the elegance of this.
I think it's great.
If you Google them, or Google Philbin Adams, they have a, it's like a little one-page, one-pager blog about their endeavor, and it's really beautiful, and just talks about the genesis of this and why they decided to do it, and why it's both good for the planet, but also it's helping nonprofits reduce their energy costs, which is often a major, you know, part of their operating, so, anyway.
I think it's great.
Yeah.
Counselor Bidwell?
I would just like to add my own appreciation for Maury Philbin and Brian Adams, it really is a remarkable thing that they've chosen to do, and it has had quite a dramatic impact on a number of different organizations, and you, I was going to make the same point, that part of the six-year deal is that during that period of time, the way they work the numbers, the way the numbers work is they're capturing that federal tax credit during that period of time in a way that the city couldn't or a nonprofit couldn't, so it's just part of what makes the formula work for them, is to set it up that way. It's very innovative, it's been used by others, they're real trendsetters.
Any other questions? Hearing none, then all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, and that's the end of agenda, so motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
All in favor? Thank you.
Back, so let's see, we'll start with those financial orders, nineteen one-two-six, "In order to appropriate Transportation Infrastructure Enhancement Fund, six thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars for Burt's Pit Road construction."
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this order? Hearing none, as for roll calls?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Present.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge, you voted yes, is that right? Counselor LaBarge, did you vote yes, just?
Pardon?
Did you vote yes on that roll call?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next is nineteen one-two-seven, "In order to authorize intermunicipal agreement for Young Adult Empowerment Collaborative of Western Mass."
Move to approve?
Second.
And second, any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, all right, let's have a roll call.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Okay, that's approved like the previous one in first reading. And now nineteen one-two-nine, "In order authorizing the lease of the Senior Center roof for solar panels."
Move to approve?
Made and seconded, any discussion on this? Okay, roll call.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
And Counselor Klein?
Yes.
That's approved on first reading. Next is nineteen one-one-seven, "In order to award contract for fiscal year 2020 audit to Scanlon and Associates," this is the second reading, motion to approve this, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Made and seconded, any discussion on this order in second reading? Then let's have a roll call.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
And Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Approved on second reading. Next, nineteen one-one-three, "In order authorizing the city of Northampton to disqualify bidders on municipal contracts who participate in the design, manufacture, and maintenance of nuclear weapons."
Move to approve?
Everyone wants to do everything with that, good, so made and seconded, and it's on the floor, any discussion? No? Okay. Here either, so let's have a roll call.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Yes.
Approved on second reading. There are two ordinances which have not been referred. Nineteen one-two-five, "An ordinance related to wireless antennas on street poles." Our process note is as follows, "Mass General Law Chapter forty-eight, Section five, requires the city council to submit zoning ordinance to the planning board for review, you know, within fourteen days of receipt, and for the planning board and the city council or committee designated for that purpose to hold a public hearings that are on together." Okay, so yeah, that's just together separately prior to adoption, so yeah, we hold hearings on zoning. So, there's that, and then there's nineteen one-two-eight, "An ordinance to amend Chapter three-twelve of the Code of Ordinances by amending Section three-twelve-one-one-ten," which, of course, everyone knows what that is off the top of their head. If you're curious about it, it is...
That's TPC.
Off-street parking areas in the Union Station Lot, okay?
So, move to refer them to, well, the planning board and legislative matters?
Even the parking one goes?
The parking one, I would move to, actually, it's already come out of TPC, I assume?
No.
No?
Let's do them separately because they're going to go to several places.
Okay, so we'll do it, yeah, so the first one, first item would be the planning board and legislative matters.
Okay, motion, a second to that referral motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the referral? If not, all those in favor of the referral, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any abstentions, passes unanimously with one absence.
Yeah, and I'd like to then refer the second one, item nineteen point one-two-eight, to transportation parking, and then subsequently to legislative matters.
Okay, a second to that, please?
Second.
Okay, and seconded, any discussion on the referral? So, all those in favor of the referral, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any abstentions, so that is referred as well. Thank you, almost done. Following is, in a matter to, which doesn't really fall into any other category, this is deliberate and vote on the process by which the city council shall designate its voting representatives to the International Code Council, ICC, for the purpose of casting four votes relative to the International Energy Conservation Code, IECC, and the method by which such votes shall be decided and cast. This is a discussion item, so we don't need a motion quite yet. Kind of do like, take some points of order before we get started. What this is, is it comes from a proposal by counselors Klein, Shara, and Dwight to join basically the International Code Council, a private entity that makes recommendations on energy and building codes, basically, right, the IECC? And that organization gives the ability to vote and to express their opinion on its recommendations, including the city council, and other departments in Northampton have joined as well in expressing their opinion. So, the question for us is, how do we decide who to designate as the voting representatives to express the opinion of the city council to this private organization? And what is the process we set up around that, such that, well, I'll tell you what my, what I think we should make sure to have, and then I'll open it up to the sponsors who can speak to this as well. Whatever we do has to be done in the open, has to be done in some kind of committee, and the second thing I think is very important is, I know other cities and towns have done it differently, but subsets of the city council can never go out and represent the position of the city council unless first authorized to do so, and second, the council has to actually take a position for it to be represented. So, in other words, I couldn't go out privately and say, I'm the city council president, on behalf of the city council, I oppose whatever, a piece of legislation in Boston or something. It's not appropriate because the council does nothing unless we vote as nine counselors. So, those two things, openness and the ratification of however the council's votes are expressed to this private organization have to be sorted out, so I'd ask, maybe the sponsors want to pick it up there and we can discuss it and fix it and finalize it. Counselor Klein?
Well, I spent a good long time talking to the city solicitor about his opinion about how this could be carried out, and one of the things that he made clear is, absolutely in accordance with what you're suggesting, and I agree, that there needs to be some open process once we designate our voters, but that it doesn't necessarily need to go back to the full council for the full council's decision and vote. It would be extraordinarily cumbersome to do that because we get the information about the ballot at the beginning of November, and then there's another organization, the EECC, that is the very kind of progressive, most cutting-edge sustainability organization that creates recommendations, and through discussion on the NESC, the Sustainability Commission, Energy and Sustainability Commission, we've talked about using the EECC as a kind of guideline for how we formulate our response. There could be as many as nine hundred proposals on the ballot. So, they helped to narrow it down to the ones that actually improve the code, and what Alan Seawold has suggested, our city solicitor has suggested, is that we formulate an ad hoc committee or we use a standing committee, and I am very much in favor so that we're not disenfranchising any of the sponsors of the original order, that we formulate an ad hoc committee of four people, and that we hold a public meeting that is also posted as a city council meeting, so counselors can come to that, and we deliberate. What the city solicitor did say is that we don't necessarily need to bring it back, I'm just reiterating, we don't necessarily need to bring it back to the city council because we have such a small window, and there's so much material to convey everything to the entire city council, and then get a vote on each of the votes that we might take, which could be as many as two hundred fifty votes, proposals that we're voting on, that we do a deliberation as an ad hoc committee, and then we, the members then can vote. So, that would be my proposal. We've also talked to Counselor Carney as the possibility of, together with the three co-sponsors, being one of the voters because she comes professionally from the building trades and has a good deal of knowledge about these kinds of matters. So, I would like to suggest that we form an ad hoc committee tonight, made up of the co-sponsors and Counselor Carney, and that we, once we have the proposals in hand and we need to do the vote in early November, that we hold a public meeting.
Thank you, would the other sponsors like to, Counselor Dwight?
I'd just speak to the, structurally, it's obviously, this is bizarre system to begin with. First of all, a number of communities don't know that they can actually, the votes are assigned to departments, this is actually, in this case, the city council's being considered a department. We're trying to get as many possible opportunities for votes to hopefully have a greater influence as such, which is why we lobbied for this, and since the council qualified for this, we, we said, let's go for that, too. Um, the timeline, the Counselor Klein describes, is, it's absolutely true, it, to try and, first of all, have it as we normally do, as a committee that comes back, makes a recommendation to the council, and then over the course of the month, the council votes, or in some cases, actually, you know, it was a suspension of rules, we do it in the same meeting. Still, there's a lot that, that's, as we know, it's deliberately set up to move slowly, and in this case, it would be too slowly to ma, to effectively vote. So that's why, I mean, this is, so the trick here is, this is a unique situation. It is technically, we're not representing the voice of the council, we're just acting as agents within this as a department, but, exactly, I don't know.
Oh, sorry.
I'm reading your face, and that's exactly the same issues I've got, because they didn't make rules relative to the council, or what the council serves as a department, so we're making it up. And the principle, I know that your principal interest is to actually clear, uh, clear deliberation with maintaining the public faith and, um, maintaining our obligation to deliberate in public.
Yeah.
I think, I think in to some degree that, that Counselor, uh, Counselor Klein's proposal actually addresses some of that, if we do assemble as we have in some, some committee mem, um, meetings identified as a full council meeting, the full council being present, um, they can even share their thoughts and deliberate, it's just that they can't vote at that point to assign a vote. So that's, and I think, you know, there's the rub.
Yeah, if I can just, uh, add on to that, um, I, I heard, you know, the word disenfranchise the, the sponsors, and it's, it's interesting, because when we talk about how this is strange, the solicitor called this, I think, good phrase was, this is a municipal three-dollar bill, you know, like, what is this thing? I think what we're trying to do is cram, um, our process into the rules of a private organization.
Right.
Um, the rules of a private organization do not govern what we do as a, as a city. We need to follow our conventions and, and democratic norms and laws. And so certainly, open meeting law, that's easy, and we all agree on that. We sort of evolved on that, we all know we, this has to be done in committees. I think some cities are not doing that, they're just deputizing four people, and they go off into a nebula somewhere, and they vote however they want. And that's totally wrong, because the public has a right to know the votes that are being cast. But the other point that I think is, is very important is, you cannot take four counselors and create, it's create kind, it's just create kind of a super committee. And they're saying, this committee can vote on behalf of the entire council without the council expressing its opinion. And that's not appropriate in my, in my judgment. I know the timeline makes it tricky, but I want to discuss the exact timeline, because I don't think it's impossible to do. Um, I think it's a practical matter, uh, we will not be voting on, on nine hundred questions as a council.
Right.
This is like, think of Congress that debates a farm bill or a federal budget, and it's literally thousands of pages. It's gonna be published as a public document, counselors will have the responsibility to review the document before they come to the council and vote on it. But I don't think we're gonna be here till three in the morning discussing whether, uh, we, you know, new residential units need two or two and a half inches of compostable insulation, you know? That kind of question that I think this thing is all about. So I envision this as a committee. I really don't care who's, who the design, the voting designees are. Um, so I really don't care what committee it goes to. And it's sort of irrelevant, if you agree with my point, that the four designees need to be transmitting the opinion of the entire council. I think it would be strange if, because it, it was the council that joined this organization, not four individuals. So that's my only thing, and I guess I just don't see the harm in it, having the council sort of ratify what this committee, whichever it does, um, whichever one we choose does, um, led, I think, by the sponsors who brought this forward, and I'm grateful to those sponsors, Shera, Dwight, and Klein, and if Counselor Carney's a part of this, that's also great. I have a hard time thinking I would disagree with any of their decisions. But my issue is not substantive, it's just process. So if the ballot comes out at the beginning of November, and the last day to vote is, I believe, November twenty-seventh, it seems like that's ample time for a committee to review it and to have the council then ratify it. I think it's ample time, so that's my concern. So Counselor Dwight wishes to be recognized unless anyone else has, hasn't spoken yet?
Yeah.
Do you want to respond to that?
Well, it's just a-
And then we'll go to Counselor Bidwell, who has not spoken.
It's a procedural question, how would, how are you envisioning that it would be, in fact, in what form would it be presented to the council for ratification?
I think of it as kind of like a-
Resolution?
Like a report, you know, like we have adopted the Sustainable Northampton Plan. How many pages is that, you know? And it's not like we're gonna go through every point within the Sustainable Northampton Plan, but it would be a motion like this one. The council hereby adopts the recommendations of the committee. If there are amendments, that would be in order, but I frankly don't think we're gonna get into a lot of detail.
Can I, just another procedural piece?
Well, um, on the same subject, because Counselor Bidwell is waiting, so, can we go to Counselor Bidwell, and then Counselor Klein, please?
Um, my, mine is, uh, obviously on the procedural part of it, too, not the substance of it.
Okay.
Uh, I, I totally agree with, with the, the view of the council president, that I don't think we want to set the precedent of authorizing four members, no matter how well-qualified, and no matter how much we're likely to agree with them, to go off and represent the views of the whole council without that step of some ratification. And I agree, it would probably be very pro forma, um, but I think it's, uh, in terms of preserving our, our process, I think it's a, an important step. And it does sound to me like, uh, like a possible timetable to, to make all that happen in the month of November. So I would, I would agree with that procedural, uh, way to handle this.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Klein?
Just a quick timeline thing, we have, we will have, from the point at which we get the recommendations, that I think we will, um, want to use as guidelines. I think that the, um, ad hoc committee, if that's what we decide to go with ultimately, will need to have a meeting, a publicly posted meeting, to draw up a set of recommendations that we will then submit to the city council, but we literally will have a two-week period. So, um, we would have to very quickly convene a meeting, um, draw up of the four member, the four voters, um, and then, and then, um, draw up some kind of recommendations, bring it to city council, and we'd have to have two votes, um, in the meeting, so that we can actually be ready to, I think we'll have three days after our city council meeting in which we can actually do the voting online, is what I think we figured out when we looked at the calendar.
I think the adoption of a report of this kind with two readings is perfectly in order, especially after it had so much public process and committee and so on beforehand. So I would be comfortable with that.
And I'd like to, I, we don't have to recognize him, but I think the mayor has some input, too, because he's doing that with this for his office as well. Um, didn't you raise your hand?
Um, I think I scratched my nose. My only input would be just, um, I'm just thinking about the, the way you were describing it, is that you could actually, you know, we've had the situation where we needed to do the appointments because of this.
Right.
And so you could actually, like, convene a full city council meeting, then adjourn and convene this special committee, you do all your deliberations, and then you'd go back to the committee of the whole again, and then vote to ratify.
Yeah.
So you could do it all at once, but-
Except that I-
It might be a long meeting.
Well, yeah, except that I do think, this is, this is why we have a committee system, which is actually why my, my preference is to use a standing committee, if in fact it doesn't matter who is actually transmitting the opinion of the city council. Because, you know, at, the four people who are doing the voting, all they're doing is, is communicating with the full council, it's decided, so it could be anybody. But again, I, I won't press that point, if people think it's important that certain people actually go to the website and click the nine hundred buttons, I mean, I don't think it matters, but, um, but anyway, I think it is a good use for the committee system, because the actual hashing out of, what was my joke example of, you know, two inches of compostable insulation versus three, is, is something for a committee rather than the full council. I'd like that, to get to the full council is just kind of a, a summer, a, 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 a full recommendation. Counselor Klein?
So just a little bit of background, too, um, about how we were thinking about, uh, what committee it would go to, whether it would be a standing committee, or we formulated an ad hoc committee. The thinking behind it was originally that, um, if we sent it to Community Resources, which could be a natural place for it to go, then one of the co-sponsors of the order would be disenfranchised. Um, and then if it went to legislative, uh, Counselor Shera, no, Counselor Dwight.
She's a chair, okay.
If we did it in legislative matters, then Counselor Shera, as one of the co-sponsors, would not be part of the discussion. We also thought about, um, the need for a certain amount of expertise, because Counselor Dwight and I have been sitting for four years on the Energy and Sustainability Commission, we have a little bit more background about what we're gonna be discussing. Um, and again, we brought in, uh, Counselor Carney, the thinking behind bringing in Counselor Carney was just her, um, expertise in the building trades. So that's the thinking, too, behind not giving it to a standing, uh, committee.
I, I totally respect that and see, and see your point. My only, um, additional comment to that would be, as you know, we post meetings as joint meetings of the council and, and the committee, and so every counselor could show up and participate, so no one would be excluded or, or disenfranchised. I'd be more concerned, I mean, counselors aren't really enfranchised with anything, except for one, one out of nine votes. It's residents of the city that are franchised or, uh, or not franchised, and my concern would be the counselor from Ward seven having a voice, but the counselor from Ward six not, the counselor from Ward four is residents having a voice, but the counselor from Ward three is not, it's just totally arbitrary. I'd rather just have the whole council debate it, and then whoever transmits the opinion of the whole council, I mean, it could be anybody. Um, so I guess if it goes to a standing committee, I mean, all sp, all sponsors can participate. That'd be my only thing, I'm just trying to like, I mean, we have to, you know, our administrative assistants of the city council does a lot of work and does a great job, and it's just like another committee for her, uh, to staff, so I'm mindful of that and whether it's necessary. So, um, that's my concern, but again, I won't push it. So we, Counselor Shera, and then Counselor Dwight?
Oh, I was just, um, I guess I was just questioning how that's different than, than an ad hoc committee that is also co-posted with the full council. It's sort of the same concept that any counselor, all, all of the councils invited to participate if they choose.
I guess that's true, but then why would we have a ad hoc committee that needs to be scheduled, and we have to create separate minutes for it and staff it if there's existing committees, if, if they are in fact equivalent? So I guess six to one, half a dozen the other, but one involves less work and is less complicated? We don't have to like, create the committee with a motion this evening? I don't know. Counselor Dwight?
Um, I'm actually perfectly amenable to Community Resources being the meeting in which it's held. Um, as far as my enfranchisement, I could participate in the debate.
Yeah.
I have no trouble sharing my voice, if people hurt me wholeheartedly for.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, uh, I'm just concerned how that breaks out calendar-wise, and maybe Laura can help with that.
November eighteenth is-
November eighteen.
The meeting is scheduled that month.
Okay, all right, it'll be-
November eighteenth is Community Resources.
November eighteenth is Community Resources.
And then City Council is twenty-first.
Correct.
Sounds good to me, it's actually maximum amount of time away from, uh, November first, which is the earliest that this could come out, and you're expecting the voting guide from the progressive organization, which you'd like to consider?
Hopefully for that. So I, I would then, uh, propose, um, I, I, that we, uh, refer this, uh, refer the discussion for, we're gonna call a report?
Right.
Uh, that will be, uh, to the Community Resources, which in turn will make a recommendation that will come back to this committee, uh, to the twenty-first, and I would ask, you know, to consider a suspension of rules in that case, to allow for two readings that day, for obvious reasons, and, uh, believe that, yep, this, this could work, so.
And would you consider as a friendly amendment that we agree that the four designees are the, the-
The members of-
The members of the committee?
Yeah.
And that the designees are bound to transmit the opinion of the entire city council as adopted? In other words, they're not going off and making stuff up at that point, they are just communicating with the full council.
Right, well, that's worth adding, although that was always the intent-
Yes.
The board was a block, but yes.
I just want to make sure that's, that's clear, yep. So, I like that. Um, any issues with that, sponsors? I hate to be pushy on these things, but God love me, I am, so, sorry.
You rascal.
Yeah. Excuse me?
You rascal.
Oh, rascal. I thought you said something else.
Yeah, I know you did.